Hello, everyone, and welcome to the September seventeenth Tucker City Council District One Post Two Candidate Forum. I am your host, editor and publisher, Dan Wizenhahn. Our candidates today are Christine Bloodworth. Christine, hello.
Hello. Hi, Dan.
Thanks. Thanks for joining us. Sean Woods. Sean Woods, hello.
Hello. Hello, everyone.
Thank you for joining us. And Virginia Reese. Virginia, how are you?
I'm well. Thank you. Hey, everybody.
Hey, thank you for joining us. So the election is going to be on November second, and early voting is going to start on October twelfth. All of our coverage will be found at TuckerObserverVotes.com. You'll be able to find stories about our forums. You'll be able to find the candidate Q and As, the letters to the editor. All of that is going to be at TuckerObserverVotes.com. And if you like what we're doing with these forums, if you appreciate the opportunity to meet and hear from these candidates, there's a little ad on the side of your screen that says to subscribe, visit SupportMyLocalNews.com. That's where you can sign up to become a supporter of Tucker Observer or Decaturish for as little as three bucks a month. Everything helps. It helps us to get the reporters to these meetings, to interview these candidates, and to just provide these opportunities for you to hear from them. Well, so with that out of the way, each candidate is going to have three minutes to make an opening statement, and they're going to have three minutes to answer each question. I will be keeping time over here. So we're going to start with an opening statement by Christine Bloodworth. Three minutes, Christine.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Dan, and Virginia and Sean for being here. I'm Christine Bloodworth, also known as Christie. I've been a long-term resident of Tucker for twenty-seven years. I've had six businesses here in Tucker. All of them have been very successful. Currently, I am the Executive Director for Omega Support Center. We're a nonprofit, and we started this because of the needs that I saw in the community that weren't being met. You know, civic engagement, you know, community outreach is one of my passions. There's Tucker has come a long way since I moved here, but we still have a ways to go. There's a lot of needs that go unmet in the community, and one of the reasons, the main reason that I'm running for city council is to help address those needs.
Thank you, Christine. Next, we're going to hear from Sean Woods. Sean Woods, three minutes to make an opening statement.
Okay, hello. Hello, everyone. I'm Sean Woods. Just want to start off with a quick story. I came back to the Atlanta area back in nineteen eighty-eight. I don't know if you guys remember, but this one TV actually used to go off. So I used to watch wrestling all day Saturday, but at the end of the day, the last show that used to come on TV was actually the Ally Pat Show. Ally Pat was the local news guy that showed all the local politics of Atlanta. So when I used to stay up and watch this show, that was just, that's what got me involved in the politics. So the same way that that captivated me, made me want to run for local office to captivate these other young guys to get them involved in local politics. I think with a lot of the visceral stuff that's going on on the national level, I think that change actually lies within the local, within the local municipals. Oh, so that's one of the main reasons why I decided to run. From a professional level, I'm currently, I'm the Studio Director for the West End Production Park. I work in an industry that's extremely inclusive. One of the issues that I've been having with the city of Tucker is I would like to, since I'm working in an inclusive industry, I would like for my community to be inclusive as well. So that's also one of the things that actually fueled me to come on and decide to actually run. Once again, I'm running for District One Post Two, and I'm glad everyone's here, and I'm hoping we have a great day.
Thank you, Sean. Virginia, three minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much, Dan and Decaturish, for hosting this candidate forum today. I'm delighted to be here to share a little bit about myself and talk about my priorities and why I'm running for Tucker City Council. I'm running for Tucker City Council because I'm very passionate about public service. I believe in the work of public service. I say I like to plant flowers wherever I am, and I want to pay it forward, things that were done for me. I grew up very poor, actually. My father was a blue collar worker. My mother was a stay-at-home mom, and she didn't drive. And when I was growing up, there were a lot of parents, coaches, services available to me that I didn't have. And so sometimes in my early teens, I had two realizations. One was I knew that no matter how hard I had it, other folks had it harder. I was very aware of that. And the other thing was, if I ever got the opportunity, I was going to give back. And I started doing things even in my twenties while I was still really struggling waitressing. Some of you know, I was trying to get a record deal during those years, and that's a hard, that's a hard journey in it, in it of itself. But I waited tables for a really long time, but I started jumping in and working, volunteering for my sister's house and other organizations, my church. In Tucker, I jumped into volunteer. We moved here, my husband and my, my daughter Ariel, we moved here. Well, my daughter was about a year and a half old, so I've lived here for eighteen years. And I jumped into public service almost immediately while my children were small. I also have a son, Christian. Also want to give a shout out to my daughter. It's her birthday today. Happy birthday, Ariel. And we just, I've just always been really passionate about getting involved. I started working on helping the school. A group of parents and I got together and started doing capital improvements to Smoke Rise Elementary. Later on, I joined the Smoke Rise Community Association Board, and within that purview, I worked on things like keeping the cell phone tower from being built on school property, working with the Stone Mountain C D, now Tucker Summit C I D, in Remersburger on crime issues along Mountain Industrial, keeping the community engaged, organizing candidate forums, being involved in Tucker twenty fourteen, and then Tucker twenty fifteen, when we became a cityhood. So I've been really, really involved in the community for over fifteen years. And I believe that that makes a really good opportunity for the next level for me is, hopefully, if I can earn everyone's vote, to be the next Tucker City Council Representative. So, thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. And the way the, the question's just for the edification of our audience is we're going to kind of do a round robin where we start off with a new candidate to, for a new question. And so with that, we're going to start off with this question with Sean Woods. Sean, this election has brought out many different candidates with a diverse range of perspectives. There are people of color running for Tucker's Council this year. There are members of the LGBTQ community running this year, and there are single parents running this year. What does that say to you about the future of Tucker? Three minutes.
Well, I, I think, I think it says more about the, the current state of Tucker. I think everything you just described is what you saw at Tucker Day. I mean, you've seen people from all walks of life, and that's what Tucker is. I mean, Tucker's, I think, right now, the last census that I think minorities make up forty-eight percent of Tucker. So everything you described, I think that's, that is what Tucker is currently. As far as the future goes, I think we have a bright future. I think we live in a beautiful community. And once again, we just want to be just a little bit more inclusive, but our makeup is, we have, we have a great makeup here.
Thank you. Virginia, same question to you. This election has brought out many different candidates with a diverse range of perspectives. There are people of color running this year. There are members of the LGBTQ community running this year, and there are single parents running this year. What does that say to you about the future of Tucker?
I think that civic engagement is something that is, is really important, and I think folks are really getting engaged. And I think that's a fantastic thing. So that's one thing that I think is wonderful about it. I think that diversity is an asset for our community. I think that it is the beauty and the framework of our city, and I think that we're going to continue to grow. So I see it as a really positive thing, both the civic engagement as well as having more diverse groups involved in the community. So I'm a, I'm a supporter of it, and I think it's a wonderful thing.
Thank you. Christie Bloodworth, same question to you. This election has brought out many diverse perspectives in the Tucker community. There are people of color running this year. There are members of the LGBTQ community running this year, and there are single parents running this year. What does that say to you about the future of Tucker? Three minutes.
Well, Dan, I think it's a great witness to how Tucker has evolved. You know, when I first moved here, Tucker was very tiny, small, sleepy town. Over the years, we have progressed into a very diverse city, and the, the mere fact that we have thirteen people running demonstrates that there are a lot of voices and a lot of groups in the community that aren't being heard, that, that feel that they don't have a voice, you know, by our current administration, our current council. And it's a great witness to the community is, is basically demanding change. There's some things that need to change in our great city that have been addressed numerous times that still we, we have no resolve. So I think it's a wonderful thing, you know, that we do have such a diverse group that has come forth for public service, and we need to embrace that because it shows what the, the citizens of Tucker are requesting.
Thank you. Okay, and this next question, actually, this is a good opportunity to remind everyone that you can ask questions of the candidates. You don't have to take my questions. If you want to ask a question via Twitch, create yourself a Twitch account, sign up, and drop a question in the comments. And we actually have one, and we're going to start with Virginia Reese. The question is, in terms of parks, Fitzgerald Field and the Tucker Path, where will you find a steady stream of dollars to make real progress on all of these projects besides S P L O S T and federal money? Three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Well, Fitzgerald, I think, is, is one of, I believe, I believe in that project, the Fitzgerald Project. I believe that we're going to be able to earn dollars. I think it's going to help. You know, we have the S P L O S T. We also have the small portion of the millage rate that contributes to our parks and recreation. So Fitzgerald will be a great opportunity for us to earn additional dollars to finance our parks and recreation. So I, I'm a big supporter of the Fitzgerald. I drove over there and looked at the property. It needs to, it really needs to be reinvented. I think it'll be a great thing. It'll be a income earner year-round. So I think that's a great way to help the entire parks and recreation.
Okay, Christie Bloodworth, same question to you. In terms of park, Fitzgerald Field and the Tucker Path, where will you find a steady stream of dollars to make real progress on all of these projects besides S P L O S T and federal money? Three minutes, Christie.
As far as Fitzgerald Fields, excuse me, I, I have played, my, my children have played and been involved in the sports that go over there. I'm not quite sold on that one yet because the neighborhoods surrounding Fitzgerald Field aren't in support of that because, you know, there's issues with as far as like entering parking and noise ordinance and a whole bunch of other stuff. So that one is still on the table, but even if it does go through, if it becomes a venue for Tucker, we can look at, you know, corporate sponsorship because we're looking at bringing in, you know, the music industry as well as the sports industry. So we can seek out sponsorship for that to help fund that most definitely, if it does go through. And then as far as the, the Tucker Path, I think the current budget that we have is extensive. It's way too much, and it's taking money that, and it's also long-term. And I think we need to curtail that because we're talking about some of the areas that the Tucker Path is looking to go into have yet to be approved by the EPA, and there's other concerns with, you know, sewage and drainage and toxic water and a whole bunch of other stuff in certain district areas. So that one is, I think we need to revamp that and consider some of the areas that we're looking to do the Tucker Path in. And then, you know, that's going to end up being, long-term, when the S P L O S T money does run out, that's going to end up being on the citizens, and I think that they need to have a part and say as to whether or not they do want such an extensive path.
Thank you, Christie. Sean Woods, same question to you. In terms of parks, the, specifically Fitzgerald Field and the Tucker Path, where will you find a steady stream of dollars to make real progress on those projects besides S P L O S T and federal money? Three minutes.
Well, I, I think if anyone's been following me, one of my huge platform points is introducing e-gaming and coding into Parks and Recs program. That's something that I'm, I'm very passionate about. I think it's outside the box as far as Parks and Rec go, but I think it's a huge revenue generator. As Parks goes right, as Parks go, Parks and Rec go right now, most of the time, it's the same family that's being recycled through the same program. So it's really not that inclusive for all families. If we can introduce something outside of the box, like I say, like esports and gaming, and bring in more revenue because we're bringing in more kids, we're bringing in more families, we can turn Tuck into the flagship, a flagship community. If you think about it, look at a community like Beaufort, that community transformed by the Parks and Rec program. So we're back to, as far as revenue generation, I think this is something, like I say, Tuck has never thought about, but it's something that we definitely can take advantage of, and we can use the revenue from this to fund other projects, whether it be something, whether it be Fitzgerald, whether it be Path, or whether it be anything. And this is also something I think that we can pair with our STEM program at Tucker High School. Right now, if you go over, look at the Olympics, they're currently vetting e-gaming for the Olympics. It'd be in the next Olympics. They're trying to figure out what sports it's going to be in. More people watch the World Cup on e-gaming than actually watch the real World Cup. So I've already sat down with our Parks and Rec program. I've sat down with the city manager and went over all this. They love the ideal, but I think this would be an excellent revenue stream for the city of Tucker.
Thank you, Sean. And our next question also comes from a viewer, and we're going to start with Christie for this one. Christie, the question is, Tucker's comprehensive plan is an opportunity to demonstrate measures and progress towards success in Tucker. What additional measures of success would you like to see in that plan? Three minutes.
Um, well, as, you know, the comprehensive, comprehensive plan, excuse me, the comprehensive plan, it's, it's pretty good. You know, the framework is there most definitely. There are some issues. I think we need more accountability as far as making sure the, the funding is going to go into the projects that it's listed out. And I don't see much, we could review the plan if we look on adding other services into the city of Tucker. But that, you know, that's progressive type thing because, you know, we're still growing, so we have a lot. You know, that is a good framework that we currently do have. So I don't see the need for much change as far as the current plan that we do have.
Thank you, Christie. Sean Woods, same question to you. Tucker's comprehensive plan is an opportunity to demonstrate measures and progress towards success in Tucker. What additional measures of success would you add to the plan? Three minutes.
Oh, well, I, I think it's, I think it's definitely comprehensive. It, it meets the term. I went through it. I like it. I mean, to be honest with you, I like it. I wish the footprint was a little bit bigger. I know, but it is, it's maybe hard to do that with a lot of, of older businesses already grandfathered into the city. But I like it. I think it's nice. I will talk, I'll probably talk about, we'll talk about housing a little bit later. So I won't address that right now, but as far as the plan goes, I like it. I think we're on the right path.
Great. And Virginia, to you. Tucker's comprehensive plan is an opportunity to demonstrate measures and progress towards success in Tucker. What additional measures of success would you add to the plan? Three minutes.
Thank you. I agree with Christie and even Sean to a certain extent. I think the framework of the comprehensive plan is really, really good. We will be having a chance to look at that again in a couple of years. I believe that in every ten years, if I have that correct, we redo the plan. But I think in a couple of years, we'll have an opportunity to relook at that. But right now, I really think that it's an excellent framework. I was going to use that same term that, that Christie did. And so I, I think, you know, as times change and evolve, and that's why it's a really good thing to look at it because where we were when the comprehensive plan was being put in place several years ago is not where we'll be in two years. And so I think that's the time to sort of relook at it and say, okay, where are we now? What needs to be changed, you know, and how can we go forward?
Great. And our next question is going to also from a reader. It's going to start with Sean Woods. Sean, what is your position on charging developers' impact fees? Three minutes.
The, I've, I've heard the impact fee debate recently, to be honest with you. I've, I've heard it, but the things about, the things I've heard about the impact fees are general terms. I haven't, I personally haven't done enough research to understand what it means totally. Like I say, I've, I've heard the general points, and it sounds good, but just to be honest with you, it's not something that I've personally researched enough to be here and there with it. Like I said, because I hear components from both sides, but I have it myself, actually went through, you know, everything that's involved in the impact fees, just to be honest with you.
Thank you. Virginia, same question. What is your position on charging developers' impact fees? Three minutes.
Thank you. I think it's, it's complicated, and I think the purpose of the impact fees is, you know, obviously maybe to offset fees, cost to taxpayers. But my philosophy is, we're either going to pay for something on the front end, or we're going to pay for it on the back end, but someone is always going to pay. And the issue that I see with impact fees is that those costs, someone is going to be paying the cost of the impact fees. The developer is going to pass those on. So, and the whole purpose of impact fees is if there, you know, is to pay for services as a result of the development. But some of those services that are already in there with their intergovernmental agreements and things like that. So I'm not really sure at this time, with the information I have, I'm not a supporter of impact fees. Maybe sometime down the road, some other information will come forward that will, you know, move me a little bit on that. But at this time, I just don't see the
I just don't see the efficacy of impact fees.
Thank you. Uh, Christie, same question to you. What is your position on charging developers impact fees? Three minutes.
Um, from what, what I understand of the impact fees, I am in support of the developers assisting in that. Um, you know, I think we need a better understanding of what's been presented to, uh, the current council. Uh, there is, um, a group that has presented numerous times as far as, as you implementing impact fees and how it would also with the plan that was presented. And saving, uh, the citizens, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars as well as the city. So I think we all need to just do, uh, deeper research because there are several, uh, cities in DeKalb County as well as other counties and, um, In Georgia that utilize the impact fees and it works out really well. Uh, for, you know, the city as well as the citizens. So I'm, I'm in favor of it if we do a little more research. And get a solid plan to implement it.
Thank you. Uh, Virginia, the next question, uh, comes from us and we're going to start with you. Uh, if you are elected, what are your goals for the next four years regarding three specific city services? The services are zoning, code enforcement and parks. So again, the question is what are your goals for the next four years with regard to three city services? Zoning, code enforcement and parks. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. So first of all, I'll address parks. Um, I'm, uh, that's one of my, Part of my campaign platform is to ensure that we grow our parks, that we protect green space. Uh, that we, um, I'm a big, uh, supporter and, and as a result of talking to folks in the community. Uh, I think folks want to see more connectivity to downtown. So I want to do whatever I can to help and work to get our, uh, path, uh, master plan. Uh, followed through and in place. And so I, you know, want to protect green space. I want to, Uh, have gathering places for our community. I want to continue on the path master plan. As far as zoning and code enforcement, um, I think that, uh, zoning and code enforcement is really, really important to build the framework. I like that term framework that we were using earlier. Those are things in place that we can make improvements along Lawrenceville Highway. Make improvements along Mountain Industrial and we have things in place. We have an excellent, uh, engineering team. We've got excellent staff that can help guide us to ensure that everything that we build new will be for a better Tucker. So those are the things that I would like to focus on and I think we have a really great framework in place to help us do that.
Thank you. Uh, Christie Bloodworth, same question to you, and I know it's kind of a long one, so I might repeat it. Uh, what are your, if you were elected, what are your goals, uh, in the next four year for three city services? And the services are zoning, code enforcement and parks. Three minutes.
Okay. Well, I'm going to start with zoning. Um, and zoning is very important. I think we need to address our, um, We need more public engagement where our zoning is concerned because there's a lot of things that take place in the city. That our citizens aren't aware of, um, whether it be for commercial, residential, um, you know, there just needs to be better communication and more engagement. As far as public is concerned, um, and we do need to restrict certain businesses, uh, Lawrenceville Highway, like Virginia said. Lawrenceville Highway, La vista Road, as well as Mountain Industrial. We have same and similar, you know, uh, numerous businesses and we need to re, We need to put a cap on how many certain types of businesses that we allow, uh, that come in, uh, to the city. Because we need to have, uh, better diversity as far as our businesses are concerned. So code, uh, zoning needs to be maintained most definitely. I just think we need to tweak a couple of areas and we need to concentrate on better communication. Code enforcement, um, I have mixed reviews about code enforcement. Code enforcement is necessary. But when code enforcement came into place and of course, you know, code enforcement is one way for the city to generate revenue. But I think we need to take a look at where and to whom the citations are being issued and what they're being cited for. Because in the beginning there was ridiculous things like with refrigerators being in the garage and, and the carport and you know, um, The lighting is an issue and so we need to address those as well as the grass and just any other. I think there's more pressing issues that code enforcement needs to focus on than, you know, right around neighborhoods and targeting people. And I will, I will say that because from the complaints that I've had, um, you know, it, it's proven that they're in designated areas. And then as far as the parks in concern, um, since I've been in Tucker, you know, we, The current, um, what we, what we've accomplished in a short period of time has been absolutely phenomenal. The, the parks are great. We need to, we, because now that we have new attractions, we're also attracting, uh, you know, Different people and you know, we're having issues with the parks being open late at night. Uh, you know, people going in there after hours and doing, you know, after hour activities and stuff. So we need to monitor those, those a little closely. I think also that all of our parks should be the same across the board. All of them should have restrooms. All of them should have proper lighting. They need to be ADA compliant, which I believe most of them are. And then also we need to have running water. We need to have water fountains, which I know during COVID. That the ma- uh, majority of them were cut off and that wasn't available. But, um, you know, it needs to be con- uh, continues to be a friendly environment, a, a go-to place, a gathering place. Needs to be accessible and I would like to see where the citizens of Tucker can actually utilize the spaces more. Uh, you know, to be able to rent out the venues.
Thank you. Uh, Sean Woods, same question to you. Uh, if you are elected, what are your goals in the next three, four years for three city services? And the services are zoning, code enforcement and parks. So zoning, code enforcement and parks. Three minutes.
Okay. Okay. So when it comes to zoning, uh, I'm, I'm definitely pro-business. So I don't want to, uh, Tell, tell current businesses that we don't want them here in Tucker. But I would like, I guess if a business, if a business, uh, along the Lawrenceville Court, or if a business closes or a business shuts down. I would like for us to really consider about what type of businesses that we are going to allow to replace those businesses. I think if you drive around the perimeter, especially in Atlanta, what you're going to see is a lot of, uh, Flagship pseudo-type cities being built out around the exits. So I would love to see, uh, the Northlake, uh, area. Being done like some of the exits that we see off I-20 or some, it looked like some of the exits we see off of, uh, off of, uh, 85 and 25. I think we have the ability to really develop Tucker, uh, and implement affordable housing and provide upper mobility, uh, to a lot of the, the younger people. Within our community. Um, as far as, uh, co- um, uh, second with coding, code enforcement. Code enforcement. Uh, I've, I've sat in the city council meetings, I've, um, And some other meetings and, uh, I, you, you hear, you do hear different things. I guess I would kind of like to see if we have any data on as far as, uh, how, how tickets being wrote between the different districts, between District One, District Two and District Three. And also do we have numbers on as far as, uh, uh, is there any type of disparity, uh, disparity between, um, um, minorities and non, and non-minorities? Uh, cause I hear things, but you know, you, you could, you never know if it's just hearsay or she-say, but I would love to see the data on how tickets are being written, uh, uh, with code enforcement. Um, once again, Parks and Rec, that's, that's part of my campaign. I, I think that's one of my major things. Um, one of the reasons why we moved back to the Tucker area was green space. I mean, I think the green space and logistics, that was, uh, our two biggest. Uh, factors in coming back to the area. Um, I, I, I love our parks. Um, I, I love, we have seasoned trees everywhere. Um, I would love to factor, we maybe do a little bit better with some of the bathrooms. But once again, uh, I think we can generate a lot of the revenue, uh, by just updating our whole Parks and Rec program as a whole.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it. Uh, and the next question, we're going to start with, uh, Christie Bloodworth. Uh, Christie Bloodworth, what is your position on implementing a nondiscrimination ordinance in the city of Tucker? Three minutes.
Well, I'm for the non, uh, the nondiscrimination ordinance. I've always been for it. I think that we need it, um. You know, there's a lot that goes on in this, uh, city, just like every city, um, you know, discrimination still exists and, and We have to be proactive in, um, stopping it. Um, I'm for it. I, I stand behind, uh, the gentleman who has tried to present it to the current council numerous times. I do think it needs to be revised in a few areas, but, um, you know, and then also with the open door policy that we have, you know, It, it needs to, it needs to pass because it protects everyone, um, because we're in a time. An era now where discrimination should not exist, uh, regardless, you know, race, sex, creed, whatever. It should not exist. So I am for it 100%.
Thank you. Uh, Sean Woods, same question to you. What is your position on Tucker implementing a nondiscrimination ordinance? Three minutes.
Okay. So we have Dunn-Witty, uh, we have Decatur. We have Shambly, we have Clarkston and we have, uh, believe Dorville. Uh, we share borders with, um, four of those communities. Uh, what separates us from those five communities, all five of those communities have a nondiscrimination ordinance. So, uh, I listened to the mayor speak a couple of days ago and, and explained a lot of the hurdles, but I think if those communities were able to get one passed, uh, we should be able to get one passed. Uh, I have a written response that I submitted to, um, Open Door Tucker. I also submitted that, uh, response to Decaturish and Tucker Observer. But I'm in favor of a nondiscrimination ordinance. Uh, if I'm elected, the first 30 days, I ask whoever's sitting at the mayor's, uh, mayor's seat, whether it's, uh, Mayor Amen, whether it's Mayor. Virel, I asked him to, um, ask if he can represent this for a reading within my first 30 days.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, Virginia, same question. What is your position on implementing a nondiscrimination ordinance in the city of Tucker? Three minutes.
I have to basically agree with the other two candidates on this one. Um, I am a supporter of the NDO. Um, I've stated that in several places. Um, I have, I've been, been behind this for a while now. And I do understand that perhaps we need to work on some of the language. I have talked to several city council folks about it. Um, and looked at some of the challenges and I'm, I'm open to having those conversations. But I really think, uh, if we, you know, I think Chris, Christina, Christie talked about open door. And, uh, and you know, I say inclusive, I, I want everyone who comes here want to feel like they feel welcomed here. That they feel welcome to put, to start a business here. They feel welcome to put down roots and start a family here. And so I'm going to work very hard. Um, to do whatever I can to get the nondiscrimination ordinance passed.
Thank you. Uh, and the next question, we're going to start with Sean Woods. Uh, Sean, Tucker has a history of a strong business community that predates becoming a city. How will you balance the interests of CID's, business owners and property owners when it comes to making good policy for the city of Tucker? Three minutes.
Uh, well, I think one of the things that's helped us at Tucker into the future, uh, one of the main things, one of my main campaign points is to, uh, Maybe revamp some of the ways we do things here in Tucker. I know we have a lot of manufacturing. But moving into the future, I think our focus needs to be, um, geared towards film and tech companies. I think Tucker, Tucker offers a lot of things that some of the communities around Atlanta, uh, they don't offer. Uh, typically both of these industries are based off of the, uh, are based in the Howard Mill area. Um, I think if we can, uh, come up with the correct marketing plan, we could bring a lot of that business into Tucker. Uh, we have a lot of empty warehousing spaces. Currently we're, uh, located, uh, in the middle of maybe five, um, five film studios. So I think the attraction to bring them to Tucker, uh, it's not an arduous, uh, uh, process. Also we have Kofa Brothers in town, which is probably the biggest lumber provider in the film industry. So the film industry already knows about Tucker. They know how seamless it is. They can get into Tucker no matter what time of day it is. I just think it's all about marketing and let people actually understand what's going on in the Tucker area. Also one of the things I want to implement is something that I call filmtucker.org. I've actually went and sat down with the DeKalb, um, Entertainment Commission. A lot of people don't know, but DeKalb County is the biggest film location, uh, Uh, in Georgia and maybe one of the top film locations in the United States. One of the things I would like to do is, uh, create a comprehensive, uh, database that highlights all the businesses in Tucker. That are able to, um, uh, cater to the film industry. And what this will be, it'll be online video database. Uh, it'll show all our parking lot locations. We can set up base camps. It'll show the restaurants with, which can cater to, say, a catering department. Uh, it'll show all the residents, uh, within side of Tucker who would like to, uh, rent or lease their houses out, uh, to the film industry. But it'd be one comprehensive video database. So when films want to come to Tucker, they don't actually have to come out here on the scout. Sitting on a bus with 20 different people, especially in a time of COVID. The production companies, the studios can actually look at everything online and go and see diagrams, see drone shots and see everything that Tucker has to offer. Uh, like I said, I sat down with the DeKalb, uh, film, the Entertainment Commission. They love the ideal. They're willing to let us be a subset underneath DeKalb County. Uh, but it's just ushering, um, ushering Tucker into the future. And the same thing, as I say, with Parks and Rec, everything's a singular idea. If we can go ahead and get this established, get the Parks and Rec with the e-game and get the STEM, uh, connected to Tucker High School. And get the tech and film companies in here. Like I said, it's one complete circle of just transforming Tucker and helping us move towards the future.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, Virginia Reese, same question to you. Tucker has a history of a strong business community that predates Tucker becoming a city. If you were elected, how will you balance the interest of CID's, residents, business owners and property owners? When it comes to making good policy for the city of Tucker? Three minutes.
Thank you. Um, I think in one word, my, I would say balance. I know that we need to be sensitive to homeowners, to residents, um, to our property owners. I also know that we do have a really strong business base here in Tucker. And I know that our businesses, uh, uh, provide six tax dollars to every one, uh, resident's tax dollar. So, you know, business is really, really important to our community. I think, uh, one of the ways that we, you know, so when I talk about balance, I think that's where zoning and code enforcement comes in. To sort of protect our residents to, um, but, but I also feel like our businesses want to be good partners. I do, I think that, um, we all want to be good citizens in the community. So, um, I, I feel like that, you know, the balanced perspective is important. I also want to talk about, um, the CID's. I think both of our CID's are doing fantastic work to, to, uh, to contribute to the community. They're getting grants. Um, I, I love, uh, the work that, uh, Matthew Lee and Emory Moersberger are doing to improve our communities. Um, you know, the, Matthew Lee is working on, um, the, uh, was it Arts Alley? Um, so that's, I think that's a really interesting and I'm looking forward to seeing that completed. Um, Emory Moersberger and this, uh, Tucker Summit CID's got a lot of great plans for Mountain Industrial. So I think we can all be good partners, but, uh, as a person who I believe in listening to all sides. That's how I plan to lead in the city council is balance and working with everyone to ensure that we're all good partners.
Great. Uh, Christie Bloodworth, same question to you. Uh, Tucker has a history of a strong business community that predates becoming a city. How will you balance the interests of CID's, residents, business owners and property owners when it comes to making good policy for the city of Tucker? Three minutes.
Okay, Dan. Um, you know, being a business owner myself and I've had six businesses here in Tucker and, um, and we, we teach startup and small business development here. At Omega Support Center. Uh, the most important thing is we've done a couple of case studies to see what the needs of the community are currently. Uh, where, um, the citizens would like to see, um, it brought in, the industry brought in, other small businesses brought into the community, what we're lacking. Uh, we need to start there. We need better sources of communication. We have great CID's. I agree with Virginia. We actually do have two great CID's, but where, where, where we're missing, the piece of the puzzle is in communication. Because we don't need to show up and say, oh, this is what we're going to do. The community engagement must be there. They have a right to input what it is that they would like to see, uh, take place in the city. So, you know, there, the communication needs to be there. Any type of relationship, it all starts, uh, the great relationships start with communication. Uh, one thing because, excuse me, like with, um, The Walk for Art, I think that was, um, on Main Street in Tucker, you know, it was brought up like two years ago, but we haven't heard much about it. We did it Tucker Day. But you know, the information needs to be, um, shared with the community. It also needs to be shared with the businesses. And we also need to talk to the current business owners in each district. What is it that we're lacking? What is, where the areas need to be improved? And with the residents, because they have a right, because, you know, there's a lot of citizens, including myself. That for some of the needs that we have to go outside of Tucker to get them in like Decatur, or we have to go to Melbourne. Or we have to go to Stone Mountain to get it, what it is that we're looking for. So the communication, we need to start there, better communication.
Great.
Building the relationship.
Great. And our next question is going to start with, uh, Virginia Reese. Uh, Virginia, what needs to happen before Tucker can take over stormwater and roads from DeKalb County? It has been a year since that has been proposed to the city council. Three minutes.
Oh, that's a big one. Um, I mean, I think that, uh, we have a lot of challenges with the, with stormwater. First of all, uh, DeKalb County is overwhelmed. Um, the funding that we have for stormwater, I think is $48 a year. It comes in on our property taxes. Um, you know, probably those rates should have been raised many, many years ago. So it's underfunded and they're overwhelmed. Certainly over the past year and a half as a result of COVID, uh, Certainly over the past year and a half as a result of COVID, uh, and being understaffed, it's added to the issue. But, um, there's a lot of challenges there. And I think that, uh, there, one of, one of, it's, it's not a challenge, but it's going to be a thing is we are going to have to have a referendum. So, uh, that's something that the voters of Tucker are going to have to make a decision on as to whether we want to take over stormwater. And I think that it's going to be a long process. As someone who, part of my campaign platform is to be a good steward of the, of our tax dollars, I want to make sure that we are financially ready for that. And so I think that we need time to look at that. Ultimately, um, I think, you know, I, I could, I would probably get there in support of it, but I think we got a ways to go. And certainly we've also got to take that to, uh, the community and give them the facts and let them make the decision, the pluses and the minuses of that. Uh, and, and, and decide that as a city.
Thank you. Uh, Christie Bloodworth, question to you. What needs to happen before the city of Tucker can take over stormwater and roads from DeKalb County? It's been over a year since that's been proposed. Three minutes.
Well, um, I'm sure all of us will agree that, that's a tough one to, um, create a solution to. Uh, you know, I've been a resident of DeKalb County for over forty years and you really have to hold DeKalb County accountable on a lot of, uh, things. Um, I will say that, um, I, you know, I do agree with Virginia, anything that the city takes on, there's going to have to be a referendum. And we have to see if it's within the budget. Uh, smaller projects, um, I believe that we can handle those. The smaller projects, and I'm, I'm talking about minimal amount, like the potholes. I was on a webinar once with, um, you know, and the mayor said, well, the potholes aren't the responsibility of the city of Tucker, but, uh, you know, the city has raised enough funds to be able to take care of smaller issues. And if we're talking about guards and this, that and the other, we can, we can, uh, you know, water drainage guards and all this and the other, we can take care of those. We don't need to wait on DeKalb County to do that. They're overworked, they're overstressed. Uh, we do need to hold them accountable. Um, and you know, it's going to take persistence for them to get that. We do have issues and I'm concerned with the amount of new, uh, construction that we have in here. Are we going to be able to handle the overload from, uh, and we have existing, uh, problems. We, we have existing infrastructure problems. So are we going to be able to handle that? And that needs to be addressed before we continue to go on with new development. And the smaller issues, I believe that we can take on as a city. Um, you know, I think we need to set what the minimum would be as far as like, you know, the repair costs. But other than that, uh, we, you know, we also are going to, if we're going to have to raise the taxes, then most definitely, you know, the community is going to have to be involved in that.
Thank you. Uh, Sean Woods, same question to you. What needs to happen before the city of Tucker can take over stormwater and roads from DeKalb County? It has been a year since that was proposed to city council. Three minutes.
Okay, uh, I'm, I'm going to go against the grain a, a little, a little bit on this. Now, I, I don't think it's as, as hard as we make it out to be. Uh, because I think we need to, uh, hold DeKalb County accountable for, uh, what's happened, uh, under their watch. So I think that's the first thing, uh, hold them accountable for, you know, what, what's happened. Uh, second, um, right now, we, like I said, we are paying forty-eight dollars a year. Uh, we're probably going to have to maybe double that. Uh, I'm assuming we're going to have to get a committee together to come up with the exact pricing on what taxes will go up to. And we bring it to a vote and let the people of Tucker decide. Uh, so I, I, I know it's a complex issue, but I, I just think, you know, it's real cut and dry, we, we need to do it. And I am in favor of us taking over, uh, stormwater.
Thank you. Uh, our next question, we're going to start with, uh, Christie. Christie, uh, sinkholes are prevalent in Atlanta because the city is built on and around creeks and forks of rivers. How can Tucker work with residents in DeKalb County to address sinkholes in neighborhoods? Three minutes.
Well, I think we need to set up a non-emergency, um, you know, uh, hotline or, um, you know, um, division, um, and it needs to be reported, just like with the potholes, you know, there needs to be a go-to number, go-to agency where these can be reported and we don't need to go. The, the issue with Lawrenceville Highway, that's seen cold set over there for almost two years. And I mean, that's pretty, that was embarrassing for the city. And people were wondering what it's going to take, you know? Um, and there was much more issues because, you know, of course there's a stream that runs through it and all this, that and the other. But, you know, the same thing, it goes back to communication. We need to communicate with the citizens, we need to communicate with the developers, the council needs to be involved. Uh, you know, planning needs to be involved, all of that, um, so that we can address the issues with sinkholes and, um, the, what was the other one, Dan, that you said, sinkholes in?
Just sinkholes in neighborhoods. It's just sinkholes.
Sinkholes in neighborhoods. Yeah, because I know that there are some, uh, currently that have been there for well over six months to a year. And, you know, no resolve, several complaints, but no resolve. And, you know, that's not acceptable. I mean, we have to have a tragedy before we get that, you know, uh, resolved. I mean, the thing with Lawrenceville Highway, I mean, of course they put the barricades up and everything else, but you know, people jokingly was driving by throwing trash in there. It's like, well, it would become the new dump of Tucker. But, you know, come on, you know, it, it shouldn't happen like today. That shouldn't happen. So I just think it needs to take better communication. We need a non-emergency, uh, task force so that the citizens can report that and then we can address it.
Thank you. Uh, same question, Sean Woods. Sinkholes are prevalent, prevalent in Atlanta because the city is built on and around creeks and forks of rivers? How can Tucker work with residents in DeKalb County to address sinkholes in neighborhoods? Three minutes.
Uh, I'm, I'm kind of with Christie on this. Uh, I agree, we, we need to put a mechanism in place to be able, a separate mechanism in place to be able to report these. But also I think we need to run this up the ladder. I mean, as voters, we do have a certain amount of power. And even over, even going over the mayor of Tucker's head, just keep going up the ladder. I mean, it's something, if, if, uh, I, if our elected officials can't get this done, then we need to put in new elected officials. I mean, it's just, it's just simple as that. Uh, I know, um, uh, candidate Viro has been, uh, talking about the sinkhole and smoke rise. Well, maybe that's not an issue that we make, we have to keep talking with, uh, with, with Mayor Amen or even that. So let's just go over their heads, go to our congressman, let him know that when these things are not getting done, uh, you're alienating yourself from a certain base of voters. And let's just put people in place of who going to make things happen for us. We make, we're going to make them put this, we're going to make this a part of their platform.
Thank you. Uh, Virginia, same question to you. Sinkholes are prevalent in Atlanta because the city is built on, on and around creeks and forks of rivers? How can Tucker work with residents in DeKalb County to address sinkholes in neighborhoods? Three minutes.
Thank you. Well, I think the first question that needs to be asked is this, uh, private versus public? Because if there is, if it's a private, um, uh, if it's a resident, I do believe that the resident would be, for the part that's on their private land, they would be, it would be their financial responsibility. Um, and if it's public, then we do have some avenues currently. I mean, one of the things we can do is address, is we can, uh, talk with Ken Hildebrand. I've called Hill, Ken Hildebrand about issues as I've canvassed around, talk with neighbors about, um, storm drains and, and such as that. Um, also DeKalb County is part of that. Um, I was on a call, uh, a few months ago, actually with, uh, Board of Commissioner Patrick, and that's one of the things they were talking about. And I'm kind of jumping a little bit, but one of the things that they said is their biggest challenge, uh, with, um, with, uh, stormwater and drains and such, um, public works is that they had to go around and determine what was actually their responsibility versus the public responsibility versus the private responsibility. Case in point, and again, I don't profess to be an expert in this area, but I do know that the property that we're talking about on Lawrenceville Highway, that was on a private business's land. And so there was part of it that was, uh, the county city. And then there was part of it was the, the owners. And so I do think that there's, you know, it's a little bit of a complicated issue. As I said, I don't profess to have all the information on this, but I do think that where the city, uh, can help, they will, and, and, and DeKalb County, because it depends on who has that responsibility. Um, it's going to have to be kind of a partnership between the three, the three stakeholders.
Thank you, Virginia. Uh, our next question, we're going to start, uh, with Sean Woods. Sean, do you think Tucker should have its own police department? And if so, how will the city pay for it? Three minutes.
Hmm, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. Uh, I guess I, I like the idea of us having our own police department, but I know there's a, a lot of causes would be incurred with that. And I know you're going to lose a lot of services. Uh, even if we have, and, and I know Tucker's not a, a area that, that calls for helicopters and SWAT. Uh, but still those are nice options to have. Uh, I guess with the police, with, uh, with the police department, what I would like to see more is actual officers that live in Tucker, uh, policing the Tucker area. So I don't have a problem with DeKalb County maintaining our, uh, police department. But I would like, uh, police officers, if, if that is an option, and of course I know they're shorthanded, but I would like to see more police officers that probably live in Tucker, actually police Tucker. Um, but, um, down the road I may change, but like I said, I, and right now I just don't see the need, uh, to have our own police department.
Thank you. Uh, Virginia Reese, same question to you. Do you think Tucker should have its own police department? And if so, how should Tucker pay for it?
Um, short answer, no. Um, I've done a lot of work. I've worked a lot with, um, DeKalb County Police over the years before, uh, Tucker became a city. I worked on, as I have talked a lot about on the campaign trail, I worked on crime issues. I, I just have a lot of faith in our DeKalb County Police Department and, um, and the Tucker precinct as well. Um, there was, um, an intergovernmental agreement that was put in place when, uh, Tucker became a city with our police and that gives us, you know, the, uh, they, we have our own precinct for the entire city. So it's almost like we have our, uh, own police department. I also think that there's just a lot of positive things that the Cab Police Force has done the last couple of years in particular. They have a mobile crisis unit that has a, a qualified registered nurse that goes along with a, a trained, uh, a police professional to address, um, uh, mental health challenges. They also have the community, I believe it's called, called Community Service Aides that responds to non-emergency calls. They do a, a ton of outreach in the community. I follow them on Facebook. They post a lot. I just think that the service that we get with DeKalb County Police Department is, is world-class. Are there always opportunities to improve? Absolutely, always. But I believe that the DeKalb County Police Department is open to that. They're working very hard to engage with the community. The other thing I'll just add in before my time runs out is, again, that's another thing would have to be a referendum and we'd have to, we'd have to look at the budget. We'd have to decide, uh, what we want to pay for. And, and as I think Sean touched on, we, we lose, uh, SWAT team, police, some other really expensive assets, uh, as part of that service that, you know, uh, could end up costing us more in the long run. So, thank you.
Uh, Christie, same question to you. Do you think Tucker should have its own police department? And if so, how will the city pay for it? Three minutes.
Um, currently at the time, I have to agree with Virginia that, no, we do not need our own, um, police department. Our Tucker precinct is actually doing a wonderful job. Um, Lieutenant Howard over there and also I know some of the police officers because they've assisted me on several of the projects as well as working with the homeless and the community engagement. They're there. Their public relations is absolutely wonderful. Um, I, I agree with Sean. I would love to see, uh, some of the police officers who actually live in Tucker be stationed here. I think that would be wonderful. Um, I, as a city, a new city, I don't think that we're quite ready for our own police department. And we also do not have the budget for that because it will take away from other, the services that we have with DeKalb County. And, you know, Sheriff Maddox is doing a wonderful job over there as far as revamping some of the areas that, um, the issues that needed to be addressed in, uh, DeKalb County Police Force. So I think, uh, right now we don't need it. I don't, I don't think that we're ready for it. Uh, maybe in a couple of years, maybe five years down the road, that's something that we can take a look at. But right now, no.
Thank you. Uh, so we're at our last question, uh, then we're going to move into closing statements. I, I want to thank everyone for participating. We do want to be respectful of your time, however. Uh, so Virginia Reese, we're going to start with you on this one. Uh, Tucker has seen growth in recent years, including new residential developments. What are your plans to manage the growth that Tucker is seeing right now? Three minutes.
Thank you. Well, I think that's why we have, um, zoning and code enforcement. Um, I think that those, um, those services, that area helps us to, uh, mitigate, to control and, and make sure that we are developing responsibly. Um, there are, you know, there's going to be some building that is going to be by right. Um, and so we can certainly work with traffic plans around those developments, but that will be a challenge, or I don't know if it's a challenge, I don't know if I should call it a challenge, but it will be an area where we won't have as much input. But when we have input, uh, one of the things I would really like to ensure that we do, and I, I think that it is already being done, is just negotiate and work with developers to make sure that we protect and add green space in those areas. Um, I think that in order for us to grow, uh, and, uh, have a vital community, we do have to have, um, uh, you know, quality, smart growth, but we do have to have more density. When we have more density, when we have more housing options for every economic level, which is something that I've been talking about, and I want to ensure that we have a vital workforce and that includes every economic level. Want to make sure we keep, uh, blue collar workers, our, uh, public health workers, everybody at every economic level. We want to keep them right here in Tucker for a vital workforce. Uh, at the same time, we also want to be very mindful and make sure that that growth is responsible and, and, uh, that it is quality and it, uh, is a place that attracts, you know, uh, young folks, uh, young business professionals, um, and keep some here for the length of their lives. One of the things I've also talked about on the campaign trail is ensuring that we have, because it is an area we really need, is to ensure we have lock and leave, fifty-five and better housing. Uh, we, we, we have a couple of areas that I think we really need to grow that, that we're, we're underserved. And I would like to work on that and see that happen. But overall, I think having zoning, being a part of that conversation with developers and just ensuring that we protect our green space, uh, will be very, very helpful to have, uh, a, a place that will be, you know, uh, a place everyone wants to come and live here for the length of their lives.
Thank you, Virginia. Uh, Christie, same question to you. Tucker has seen growth in recent years, including new residential developments. What are your planage, plans to manage the growth that Tucker is seeing right now? Three minutes.
Well, I think, uh, going blanket and simple is that we need to regulate our growth. Um, one thing that, because we, we have issues now and, um, with our traffic. Uh, you know, there's, there's five main roads that feed into Tucker and they're backed up in the morning, they're backed up in the afternoon, especially with school. You know, it's gridlocked, like it'll take you an hour, an hour and a half. So while the demand is here to move to Tucker, it's attractive and everything else, but if we don't address those issues as far as traffic control and also I agree with Virginia, we need the density because we cannot give up all of our green space. I mean, Tucker is absolutely beautiful as far, because we still, we have a good blend of, you know, con- concrete and, and greenery. Uh, so we need to, we need to keep that. We need to manage it a little bit better. Um, and regulate the amount of, uh, new subdivisions that we have that are coming in and also how far we space them out. Uh, because it, I, I do believe if we keep going at the rate that we are now, that we are going to max out on our, um, ability to be able to manage it and, um, keep everybody happy, you know, because it's becoming a problem now. So it, uh, we need to address it. And then we need, you know, once in, it goes back to the communication. We need to work closely with the CIDs. We need to work closely with, uh, the different districts and also the city council and, um, you know, and the residents. Because there needs to be the communication there all the way around the board and what, um, what is the, uh, overall vision for Tucker? And, um, you know, because it's a great place to be and we need to keep it that way, but how are we going to keep it that way?
Thank you. Uh, Sean Woods. Uh, Tucker has seen growth in recent years, including new residential developments. What are your plans to manage the growth that Tucker is seeing right now? Three minutes.
Um, I, I, I think, well, one of the beauties of, I guess, about, uh, uh, my business connections, I've been able to sit in meetings and actually heard, uh, developers talk about Tucker. And, uh, I guess one of the things we as citizens of the Tucker, as citizens of Tucker have to realize is they're not making new land. And soon Tucker will be a battleground. Uh, you're sitting on gorgeous lots, green space and everything. Uh, with that being said, uh, we still have to be able to maintain, uh, some control of our community. Because if not, someone else is going to come in and, uh, change it for us. Uh, we have to keep in consideration Tucker is, uh, a metropolitan of Atlanta. Uh, but also with the developers coming in, we got to get them to adhere, uh, to the charm of our community. Um, we went out to the, the meeting they had, uh, at the corner of, uh, Mountain Industrial and, uh, Hugh Howe the other day. And, uh, councilwoman, uh, uh, Soltis said something that I, I, I actually agreed with. Uh, but she said that they held the developer, uh, to be able Uh, but she said that they helped the developer, uh, to be able to, uh, build, um, in terms of making it uniform with Tucker standards. And I think that's a good thing because once again, even though growth is coming, growth is here, we still need to be able to maintain, maintain our charm because that's one of the reasons why we all moved here. Like I say, logistics and green space was one of the main reasons I came back, uh, to the Tucker area. So we need to be able to maintain all that. But also, um, I think we have space to still be able to provide some type of upward mobility. I know we're come, a lot of the developers want to come with the rental townhomes. That's, that's fine, but I think we still need to be able to have something for young kids, uh, to get out of college, to be able to come back to Tucker and still be able to maintain a sense of community. And I think we can do that by, once again, building out that, um, North Lake area where it may be townhomes or condos where someone graduates from Tucker High School, go off to college, get their degree, they come back and they have somewhere to live. And then if they, then if they decide to get married, they may find a nice little cottage home to move in. But then when they decide to have kids, they also have another option to be able to keep those people in our community. So I think that there are things we can do, but I think, uh, we just have to get behind our growth. I mean, that's, that's, that's the bottom line. Because like I said, we don't, we don't take charge of it, someone's going to come in and take charge of it. You can take one of these houses in Tucker, go anywhere, go anywhere in Smoke Rise for instance, and pick up one of these houses. You drop it on the other side of 25, it's doubling the price. Uh, you go along north side and drop one of these houses, it's tripling the price. So, um, uh, us being a hidden gem is no longer, we're still a gem, but we're not a hidden gem. So we definitely just need to get a, get ahead of our development and maybe stop some of the, you know, some of the bickering and understand what we are as a community.
Thank you, and that brings us to the end of our questions. I want to give each candidate, uh, three minutes to make a closing statement. Uh, we're going to start with, uh, Christie Bloodworth, uh, three minutes to make your closing statement.
All right, well, Dan, thank you so much for this opportunity, it was absolutely great and Sean and Virginia for coming. And, um, it was, you know, I think we all raised valid points. And it, it, it's most definitely expressed that we all love Tucker. Um, you know, I've been a long-term resident of this community 27 years and, uh, it's been good to me. I've had six businesses, um, I've addressed a lot of areas, my kids went to school here, my, my grandkids, uh, my grandsons go to school here as well. So, you know, Tucker's a wonderful place, but there's still some issues that we have to address. Uh, we need to be involved more in the community, we need to do, uh, more community engagement, public relations and help meet the needs of citizens who in, that have been long-term residents of, uh, Tucker that are doing everything that they can to stay here. Um, you know, those are the issues, those I, I fight for those, uh, you know, to get out there. We need to address the issues with our homeless, we need to address the issues that we have with our seniors because we are now a recognized as the aging city. So we need to address those issues. And affordable housing and everything else, and our schools. We need to take a good look at those, we need to work with the camp counting officials to make their Tucker schools better. Because there's a trend to where people will come in and they'll stay throughout elementary school, but then they see that and then they take a look at it and then they'll move out, you know, when we get to middle and high school. So we need to address a lot of areas. As a new city, we still have a lot of growth to do, we're, we're, we're on the right path. Uh, you know, we need better diversification. Um, you know, that has been an issue because we're not that sleepy town anymore. Where, where we have grown past being that tired little town that goes to bed at nine o'clock. Uh, we're not there anymore. Uh, so we haven't been there for years and there's a lot of people in this community that they, they feel that they do not have a voice. They do not have the representation that they need. And I'm committed to this community, you know, uh, whether you're in my district or not, I'm committed to this community and helping meet the needs of the people. And I'm running for District One, Post Two, and, um, I thank you all for your time. And then you can come and see me and reach out to me on voteforbloodworth.com if you have any questions or concerns. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Uh, Sean Woods, three minutes for your closing statement.
Oh, well, I, I definitely appreciate you, Dan, I appreciate the Decaturish for setting this up. I appreciate, uh, uh, the, the two young ladies that I'm actually running against. Uh, at least I think we gave the citizens of Tucker a lot of information today as far as who they need to vote for. Um, I think, I, I think with me, I think you've got someone who's just different from everybody else. Uh, whether it's my district or whether it's anybody else running, I have my own ideas. Uh, I have pages of ideas that I want to implement in Tucker. Uh, so once I get on city council, I mean, it's, 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 it's full steam ahead. I don't have to sit in, I don't have to sit in a seat and wait on the committee to give me ideas and, and me decide what I'm going to vote for. I have my own ideas, I have my own agendas that I'm going to push it for the betterment of District One and for Tucker. Like I say, I have pages on pages of ideas, uh, that I think that'll take our city to the next level. And I just want to, like I say, get on city council and just, just get us moving toward, get us moving toward the future. I do think we're on a nice pace now. Uh, but I, I definitely would like to, to, to be one of those people that, that usher us into the, the next generation as far as, uh, uh, what Tucker is going to be. Um, this is a lifelong dream of mine, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to be here, like even, even sitting here doing this, uh, this Zoom. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to hold my excitement in and, and, and stay professional. Like I say, this has always been a dream of mine. So I'm, I'm here for the long haul, uh, we're going to keep pushing forward. Uh, I'm not going to stop with my ideas, I mean, I'm not going to stop doing all the things that I do for Tucker. If you've been following me, you, you'll see me out in the community. I just gave 20,000 COVID masks to Tucker High School. I just set up, I have, I have a clinic coming to Tucker for free, just going to put a, uh, a COVID relief clinic and a wellness clinic into the city for free. All, all, uh, all equipment will be free, uh, all medication will be free, all, all supplies will be free. Those are the things that I do constantly, I'm a connected person and I'm trying to use all my contacts to better my community. Uh, so I'm here, I'm not going anywhere and we're going to keep pushing along. And I definitely appreciate you guys having this forum today.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, Virginia Reese, uh, three minutes to make your closing statement.
Thank you very much, Dan, thank you to Decaturish for, uh, holding this candidate forum today. Thank you to Christie and Sean. Uh, I think it was a vigorous and, and a, a really, um, positive, uh, discussion. And I'm, I was delighted to be here with you today. Um, as someone who, um, you know, suffered greatly, as I mentioned, uh, earlier, suffered greatly in my early years, I want to do whatever I can to support and work for every single person in my district with integrity, respect, care and, um, and I believe that I have worked in the community for over 15 years and I think folks trust me as a result of that. I have a true, true proven track record, building relationship, relationships in the community, I'm getting ahead of myself. Um, and as a result of those proven relationships of doing the work over all these years, I, um, am honored and grateful to have the endorsements, uh, Board of Commissioner Stephen Bradshaw, my dear friend and my, uh, campaign chair, former Senate Minority Leader, uh, Steve Henson, um, Representative Billy Mitchell, Sol LeThurman, Pat Soltis. And I believe these folks have endorsed me because they know that I really care, they've seen me do the work, they've seen me out in the community for a long time and they know that I'm going to, uh, care for everybody in our district. There's a lot of great work that's been done in Tucker. Um, there's a lot more work to be done. I, uh, I agree with, uh, what Christie was saying and, and some of what Sean was saying, there's more work to be done. And, um, I plan to serve, uh, the community with respect and dignity. And, and I'll just take a moment and acknowledge my friend Bill. I want to be the kind of public servant that Bill was, he was kind, he was caring, he was there for everybody. Bill was a friend to everybody. And that's the kind of person I want to be, that's why my cell phone number is on all my campaign tape, campaign materials because you can call me or text me with any issues and I'm going to be there for you. Um, I asked for your vote, uh, early election begins October 12th, as Dan mentioned earlier. Election Day is November 2nd. You can check me out at VirginiaReese.com, that's one Ian Mill, R-E-C-E. And, uh, look forward to seeing folks on the campaign trail. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Virginia. And, uh, thank you to all of our candidates, number one, for showing up for this forum. Number two, for putting yourself out there and being willing to step up and, uh, be interested in public service. Uh, I, I end these things by reminding people that local government is, is really the most important government we have. It's the one that's closest to you, it's the one that can have the most impact on you and your daily life. So if you're, if you've been watching, I applaud you for being interested. I encourage you to go vote, uh, as Virginia mentioned, early voting starts October 12th. Election Day is November 2nd. You're going to be able to find all of the coverage of these forums and our candidate Q and A's and letters to the editor, uh, at TuckerObserverVotes.com. I want to take a minute to ask if you appreciated this opportunity? If you appreciate the work that we're doing to introduce you to these candidates? There's a little ad right here on this side of the screen to, to go to SupportMyLocalNews.com. Uh, you know, free news is not free, we, we need community support to continue to not only provide things like Twitch, but to send reporters to, uh, these public meetings to watch what our public officials are doing. So if you do, if this meant something to you, if you appreciate this, please go visit SupportMyLocalNews.com and become a supporter of Decaturish or the Tucker Observer, you'll find that information there. Our next forum is actually going to be, uh, tomorrow morning. So please grab a cup of coffee and spend your Saturday with us. Tomorrow morning, we're going to have Tucker District Two, Post One from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. They're going to have Tucker District Three, Post One from 11:00 AM to noon. This was the Tucker District One, Post Two forum. I want to thank you all for watching and we'll see everybody tomorrow morning. Bye-bye, everybody.
Bye, thank you.